All right, I want to welcome everybody to the November 10, 2014 School Board Study Session. It was the beginning of winter today. For anybody watching at home, you know it if it's today. And if you're watching us on the delayed feed later in the month, it's November 10th, and we had a great start to winter. School was running, everybody was here. We're opening our meeting tonight with a spotlight for the National Merit Scholar -- oh, no, they're not here because of the weather. We're opening with the World Drumming Class, which I'm just really excited and very pleased that you were able to make it tonight despite the weather. And I'm going to start by introducing your teacher, Steve Schmitz.
Thank you so much. I'd also like to give some credit to my student teacher, Nick Mason, who's been working with these guys for the last three weeks as well. I'm very proud to be here with this class. This is a small representation of a class of about 23 people, and we meet for the semester. It's a very diverse class. We have people whose families hail from four different continents and all the major faiths of the world. And for most of them, this is their only music class that they will take at the high school. Some of them have taken a band orchestra choir class in the past, and it really wasn't for them. And they found out that they are musicians again, and really good ones. And so I'm really proud of that. I just want to tell you real quickly of how far this class has come. It's been in existence for five years. This is the fifth year. The first year, they were better known for locking a substitute teacher in the band office and stealing her purse, quite literally. So it just was a very different type of class. And so I'm extremely proud of the culture that we have now, and the pride, and the students that we have now. And you'll hear them in just a moment. I'd like to bring up one of our students to introduce the next piece, or the piece we're going to play for you, I should say, Mr. Joseph Bentley.
All right, so we're going to be performing "The Lion Sleeps Tonight." It's an R&B song written in the early 60s in the Zulu language of South Africa. And I hope you enjoy it.
That was just fantastic. Thank you so much for doing that. And I don't know, at home, you might have missed the vocals, but we were loving the vocals here in the room because I don't think you were miked for the home audience. But I bet the drums were picked up just -- that was just amazing. What a great way for us to start our meeting. Steve, if you want to go over, we'll do the spotlight. And while I'm walking up there, maybe you can tell the board and our at-home viewers about the invitation to play for the Minnesota Music Education Association.
Yeah, actually, our class last year put in an addition CD, and we put it to MMEA, which stands for Minnesota Music Educators Association. So we have a convention in Minneapolis every year. And usually when a group's invited, they've kind of made it. And so we always have lots of room to grow and lots of places to improve. But I'm really proud how far we have made it in the amount of time we have. So they invited us to play on February 13th this year, 2015. So it'll actually be the next generation of this class, but we may invite a few of these folks, too. So we're very proud of that.
Should I just take it out to them because they've got the drums in?
Perfect. Yeah, our first person we'd like to honor who's here tonight is Ms. Brenda Hernandez. The second person we'd like to honor tonight is Mr. Joseph Bentley. The next person is Ms. Julia Lautcher. And last but not least, Mr. Idris Hussein.
We would like to get a picture. Maybe if God has students to stay there, and maybe Nancy can just provide one, and it's to be --
Thank you so much.
Steve, before you leave, can I ask you one more question? I know I've seen photos of this group, your class, out and about in the community, doing some good community service. Can you say anything about that?
Oh, yes, thank you. We have played at the Tower Light Senior Center, and we have played at the Park Spanish Immersion School with the younger children. And we try to do some things around the school, too, playing for Black History Day, Multicultural Day, and sometimes some lunch concerts, just to entertain our fellow students. So we try to do some things in the community and in the school community. So thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. So next up is approval of the agenda. And on tonight's agenda, we have several study session topics, an audit presentation, an international travel request from the high school French class, an international travel request from the high school German class, multiple measure rate MMR update. That'll be from the Director of Assessment and Research. We'll get some good reports on some of the recent test data from last year. And then we have a study session on closing the achievement gap. And last, we have an elementary addition and district construction update. We have our consent agenda. And then on our action agenda, we are being asked to approve the 2014 audit, to approve the international travel by the high school French class, and to approve the international student travel by the high school German class, followed by communications and transmittals, and then adjournment. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Ken and seconded by Bruce. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Carrie, 7-0. And first up on the agenda is the audit presentation. This is going to be by Ryan Engelstedt.
Well, that's a tough act to follow, that's for sure. I don't think you'll find this to be quite as exciting, but I'll do what I can. All right. Well, I did have the pleasure to meet with the board and go through the audit reports in more detail prior to the meeting tonight. So this will be a very high-level recap of the work that we did, the results of the audits, and so forth. So to get started, just a brief background. So we were on-site to perform the audit testing in the middle of October. We had a team of about five on-site for that week, and very pleased with how things went. And the staff was very cooperative with dealing with the requests and questions coming their way from a team of five auditors on-site at one time. So we appreciate that. After we completed the audit fieldwork, then we moved on to getting the draft reports put together, which always takes more time than you would anticipate, and got that finished up about a week or so ago. And that's what we went over tonight in more detail with the board. As far as the reports that we're issuing, we have the audited financial statements, the required communications letter, also an audit report with regards to the Student Activity Funds as well. And then I will mention, we also perform a separate audit of the federal grant programs for the district. There'll be a separate standalone report for that. It's very brief, and I'll make some comments later on in regards to the result of that audit as well. As far as the audited financial statements, to start off there, the first comment I have, and the most important of all, is regarding the opinion that we're issuing or including within the auditor's report of the audited financial statements. And that is an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the highest grade that we can provide as auditors in terms of the accuracy of the financial statements. In terms of the financial results that are reflected within the financial statements, a brief comment that I'll make in that regard is there's certainly been nice progress made towards building up the fund balance in the general fund. There was a sizable increase within the unassigned fund balance category this year. So that's now in a position where it is well above the -- not necessarily excess, but in a good position compared to what the minimum working capital level is that's required per the board policy. So certainly in a good position there. Some of the favorable results this year were due to positive variances with regards to state revenue, as the general education aid came out above budget due to higher-than-anticipated enrollment. And then good cost containment on the expenditure side to allow for about an overall positive variance in the general fund expenditures of just under $700,000 there. So great job by the district in keeping the costs in line with the budget. In the second document that I mentioned earlier is our required communications letter. That has a few different components to it, the first of which is our internal controls report. The two items that surfaced in there this year that we have to report on per the audit standards relate to the first being what's considered a material weakness in internal control because of the fact that we did identify a few adjustments as part of the audit process that were material to the financial statements as a whole per the calculation that we go through in determining what would be considered material for the financial statements. So we do have that included this year as a finding in that report. The other finding that's included in there, it's at a lower level. It's referred to as a significant deficiency. In situations where the audit firm is relied upon to prepare the financial statements, then we are also required to report that as an internal control over financial reporting weakness. So that is the other item that's included in there as well. The balance of the letter includes various items, some informational points that I talked about in some detail with the board. The one that will have the most significance going forward here is in fiscal '15, there's going to be a change to the accounting requirements related to pension obligations. So for next year's financial statements, for the district-wide statements, this won't affect the fund balance position for the general fund or anything like that. But the proportionate share that belongs to St. Louis Park schools of the underfunded amount of the statewide plans, the PARA and TRA, that proportionate amount will get picked up in the district's financial statements as a liability. And based on what they're currently projecting, those numbers will be very significant. The key there, though, like I said, it doesn't affect your general fund balance. That's key. And also what we've heard is the bond rating agencies really aren't going to react -- they won't have a negative reaction to that because they're already aware that those underfunded liabilities are out there, and they've factored that into the ratings that they provided previously. So pleased to report, we had no disagreements with management as part of the audit process, no significant difficulties that were encountered during the process either. And then another component of the letter, it gets into if there's any significant estimates that are built into the financial statements. The one that I do mention as part of these meetings is with the receivables that are due from the state, there's some significant estimates that are built into that. Basically, the district is in a position where you have to use the best information available at the time that you have to close the books. But the final funding amounts related to some of those state aid programs is not finalized until well into fiscal year '15, beyond the point where, you know, we're allowed to issue the audited financial statements. So that is certainly one of the most significant estimates that's included. Another report that we issue, as I alluded to earlier, is the report for the Student Activity Funds, including both the junior high and senior high activities. And pleased to report there that there was a reduction in the number of findings that we had as part of that audit this year. So some of those items we addressed in previous years and talked about were properly addressed this year. So that was good to see. And there's just one lone remaining finding that we reported in that report this year, and that'll be up to the district in terms of how to address that going forward. And then the final audit that I'll refer to and commented briefly on is that federal award programs audit. So this year, we were required to test four different federal grant programs as part of the audit. In most years, it's only been three. Based on how the rotations work and having to test programs over a certain dollar threshold at least every third year. So the programs we tested did cover 2.6 million out of the $4 million of federal grant expenditures that the district had for fiscal year '14. And again, there, pleased to report, no findings surfaced as part of that work that are considered to be compliance findings. So a great job in that area as well. That is basically the comments that I wanted to make in regards to the audit process and results and such. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that anybody has at this point, what if none. Certainly, we're -- thank you, and we appreciate being of service to the district.
I just have a couple, Ryan, here on the --
Sure.
You as the auditors prepare the financial statements, you said?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and that is a decision we've made as a district to have you do that, and other districts also have you do that, is that true?
Correct.
Because it's rather than pay for somebody to be on staff and do that even though technically it's considered a deficiency, it's a practice that happens in other districts as well.
Exactly. I would say for the audits that we do for governmental entities, probably 75% of the time, we have that finding in our report. So yes, it is very common.
And then I understood you to say amongst all of that is that it was a clean audit? You don't use the term unqualified opinion anymore? What do you call it as auditors?
Unmodified.
Unmodified. But that's the best you can get?
That is the best, right. So...
As a non-autor, I wanted to make sure that I understood that correctly.
Yeah.
And so did the people watching at home.
Right. The one caveat there, of course, is that in the detailed language that goes into our auditor's report, we are providing an unmodified opinion. But that being said, it is always a good reminder that the assurance we're providing is considered to be reasonable assurance versus absolute assurance, because obviously, we're not testing every transaction that occurred during the fiscal year. So that's just standard. So, yep.
Very good. Thank you very much for your time here and for your good work on the audit. And thank you, Sandy, for the work of your staff and people on this.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're up for -- the first is going to be International Travel Request High School French Class. And I believe we're going to hear --
I guess we'll introduce the --
Okay, yes.
I don't think I have everybody real soon.
Okay. My name is Julie Conrad, and this is my colleague, Kyle Sweeney. We both teach French here at the high school. And we are currently planning a trip to France and Belgium for next summer with 10 students from St. Louis Park High School. As French teachers, we offer a travel abroad experience to our students every other year in order to provide students with the firsthand linguistic and cultural experience in a French-speaking country or countries. And this time, it's two countries, Belgium and France. As language teachers, we believe that our trip to Europe, which includes a family stay, will help open a whole new world for our students by heightening their cultural awareness of other -- or their awareness of other cultures. As language -- let's see, I already said that. Excuse me. This trip is offered to levels 2 through 5, or 2 through IB. And we have 10 students who have signed up for the Belgium-France trip. These students are -- there's eight girls and two boys, and 20% are students of color. They are sophomores, juniors, and seniors at this point. So they'll be between -- one will be graduating this year. They'll be going into junior and senior year. Kyle and I will both lead the trip, and we're working with a company called ISE, which stands for Intercultural Student Experiences. Kyle has led three trips with this company prior to this summer, and I co-led a trip with her two summers ago to Switzerland and France. ISE is a Minneapolis-based company that organizes student travel abroad, and they take care of trip logistics like the flight, hotels, and making reservations for us at museums. And for instance, on this trip, we're going to be going to, when we go to Paris, we're going to the top of the Eiffel Tower as one of our cultural experiences. And we're also going to be eating dinner in the Latin Quarter as a group, and going to, if anybody's been lucky enough to go to Europe and to Paris, to the Musée d'Orsay. Yes, a minute. So ISE also ranges for health insurance through a company called Core Travel. And they provide us with a rigorous code of conduct, excuse me, for both students and leaders while we're participating in the program. And in addition, the ISE staff is available to us 24 hours a day throughout the trip. So while we're in Europe, we can call over here and talk to anybody, or to somebody there to help us if we need help. This will be a 14-day trip, and as I said, to Belgium and France. We'll be going to Brussels first, and then we'll take a train down to Tours in France, which is in the Loire Valley. And after the students do a five-day family stay, we will take the train back up to Paris, where we'll spend three days touring and trying French food. And as I said, we'll end the trip in the Latin Quarter, or we'll end the trip eating the last evening in the Latin Quarter. So I think that's all I have to say. And Kyle's going to continue.
In order to prepare our students for the trip, we hold parent and student meetings. We held one meeting with parents and students last spring, one this fall, and we'll have a pre-departure meeting in the spring of 2015. We also meet with the students once a month to do cultural lessons and help them practice their language and go over travel strategies. Also to prepare our students, we talk about things like safety, and we go over our student code of conduct many times, which includes behavioral rules. You know, they agree to speak French the whole trip. They agree to avoid any sort of behavior like drinking or drugs or sex. And they sign that, and they know that we're serious. And for -- oh, they also, as Julie mentioned, the, let's see, what else? The code of conduct, and then the ISE also provides their insurance, which is provided to them, and we go over that with the parents as well. Our program costs about $3,900, which includes the flight, hotel, family stay accommodations, entrance fees to plan cultural visits, as well as several meals, but not all meals. So not included are five meals, passport fees, and personal expenses. The travel company, ISE, does provide some scholarships based on need, which might range from $200 to $600 for a student. Otherwise, we do help facilitate fundraising. The parents and the students themselves are highly encouraged to organize fundraising, and the parents are doing some of that to be scheduled between now and June. And we did try to work with a fundraising consultant who had actually offered to raise like $30,000 for our students who normally can't go on those trips, but we were told it wouldn't work out. So we're working on that type of fundraising, too. Let's see. In general, we love taking this trip. We think that participants gain experience in culture and, of course, language ability, and they find that they really can speak the language in a real situation with real French people and real Belgians. They get to meet and get to know their very own French family, and many of them stay in contact over the years and have their French teenage friend come visit or go back and visit them again. So are there any questions?
You mentioned you were going to go to Musée d'Orsay?
Yes.
I could spend all day on the fifth floor. It's one of the most beautiful places in the world, and I think that that will be worth the trip all by itself.
Yeah, we love it there. Anything else?
There may not be many questions because I'm noticing that our questions are anticipated. So this has been -- this is good. The safety, the insurance, the behavior, all those kinds of things. So I appreciate that.
Yes, we understand. We understand your concerns, and our ISE is very good. We're really happy to be working with them. They're very supportive in everything we need. And everything that we're worried about, too.
So I assume the, if they're violating, if they violate the rules, then they'll be sent home at the parent's expense?
Well, a consequence -- yeah, a consequence may range from, like, having to spend the rest of the trip basically by our side, depending on what they do, which is miserable for us, too. But we will do it. And then if it's a more serious consequence that's needed, then they will be sent home.
rules, you know, they agreed to speak French the whole trip, um, they agreed to avoid any sort of, um, behavior like drinking or drugs or sex. And they sign that and are, they know that we're serious. And, um, for, uh, oh, they also, um, as Julie mentioned, um, the, let's see, what else? The code of conduct and then the, um, the ISE also provides their insurance, um, which is provided to them and that we go over that with the parents as well. Uh, our program costs about thirty-nine hundred dollars, which includes the flight, hotel, family stay accommodations, entrance fees to plan cultural visits, as well as several meals, but not all meals. So not included are five meals, passport fees, and personal expenses. The travel company, ISE, does provide some scholarships based on need, which might range from two hundred to six hundred dollars for a student. Otherwise, we do help facilitate fundraising. The parents and the students themselves are highly encouraged to organize fundraising and the parents are doing some of that to be scheduled between now and June. Um, and we did try to work with a fundraising consultant who had actually offered to raise like, um, thirty thousand dollars for our students who normally can't go on those trips, but we were told it wouldn't work, work out, so, um, so we're working on that type of fundraising too. Let's see, in general, um, we love taking this trip. We think that, um, participants gain experience in culture and of course, language ability and, um, they find that they really can speak the language in a real situation with real French people and real Belgians. They get to meet and get to know their very own French family and many of them stay in contact over the years and have their French teenage friend come visit or go back and visit them again, so. Are there any questions?
Uh, you mentioned you were gonna go to Musée d'Orsay?
Yes.
I could spend all day on the fifth floor. It's one of the most beautiful places in the world and I, I think that that will be worth the trip all by itself.
Yeah, we love it there. Anything else?
There may not be many questions because I'm noticing that the, our questions are anticipated, so this has been, this is, this is good. The safety, the insurance, the behavior, all those kinds of things, so I appreciated that.
We understand your concerns and our ISE is very good. We're really happy to be working with them. They're very supportive, um, and everything we need, so, and when, everything that we're worried about too.
So I assume the, um, if they're violator, if they violate the rules, then they'll be sent home at the parents' expense?
Well, a consequence- Yeah, a consequence may range from, um, like having to spend the rest of the trip basically by our side, depending on what they do, which is miserable for us too, but we will, we will do it. Um, and then, um, and then if, if it's a more serious, uh, consequence that's needed, then they will be sent home.
And, um, so you said you're doing some vi- or some fundraising, um, well, two questions. First one, what is your level of amount of people that you wanna take with you? What's your cutoff point, I guess?
Like the maximum or, well, we, the, um, right now, we have a ratio of five students to one teacher, which is really great. And I, I don't think we'll get any more students to sign up this year. Cause they, you know, they all know about it, they've known about it and the parents know about it, so.
And the ones that are signed up, they're financially can-
Yep, they know, they made the-
Do you have to do a fundraising?
Yep, they made the financial commitment and they ask us, um, when they ask us about fundraising, what we usually say is, yes, we want you to do fundraising. Because it's not Julie and I that does it, it's really them that they're motivated. And a lot of the kids will get a job. You know, one of our students is paying for the whole trip. You know, she works at Caribou and she's paying for the whole trip on her own. Students have done that in the past too, so they know that they're responsible and they know also how much spending money they'll need when they get there, so.
And then, last one, during that five days that they'll be doing, I assume they're with the family that they're with?
Yes.
So during that five days, they just do what the family does or, okay?
Yep, the families are great. They've been working with ISE for years and years. Um, ISE does home visits to all the families for, before the, our students come and the families in France aren't paid. They do it really because they love the cultural experiences and they love to meet people from other, um, countries, so. And then Julie and I stay in a hotel in Tours and we kinda, you know, we'll go visit the chateau and see all the sights in the area, so we're always available too.
Sandy, I, this is for you. My recollection is in our new insurance that it does cover international travel, is that right?
That is correct. That's always been in our insurance to do that.
You know, it's my sister's birthday today and we celebrated last night cause I'm here. And one of the things she said to me was on her bucket list is going to France, Paris in particular. So I think it's a great opportunity for these, uh, these students and I think it sounds like you've done a great job planning it and making it a safe and educational experience. So thank you for coming to tell us about it and we'll take action when we get to that part of the agenda.
Thank you.
Next, um, in our international baccalaureate world in which we live, we're gonna hear about a travel request, um, to go to Germany and this is by, uh, one of our teachers, Sherry Fox. And you, uh, please introduce the others who are with you.
Yeah, um, I think I need to hook this up. I decided to show you some pictures too. I thought it would be entertaining. This is Megan Hein and this is Owen Schoger. They both went to Germany with me a couple of years ago. And so they can tell you a little bit about their experience and what they got from the trip. Um, our trip is a little bit different than the French trip and you'll see why in a second if we can get the technology to work, please. Okay. How do I turn that on?
Can I give it a try?
Oh, maybe it's my screen.
Yeah, and then just unplug this and plug it in again.
Okay.
By magic it'll work.
I hope.
There we go.
All right. Let's hope the visuals are good here. Can you see anything? Okay, hi, I'm Sherry Fox and I've been teaching German here in this district for twelve years now. Sixth at the high school so far and before that, sixth in the junior high. Before I came to Saint Louis Park, I lived and worked in Germany for about ten years in marketing and PR. Uh, so I really know German and I really know Germany. And I am excited to be able to take, I hope, another group of students to Germany next summer. And I'm here to tell you today a little bit about what we're gonna be doing. Little bit of history, I know you, you might know that I took over for Herr Holmbeck. And we were talking the other day about how long the German department has been taking students to Germany. And, uh, we decided it's been about thirty years now and we've been going on biannual trips because we wanna give kids a chance to prepare themselves linguistically as well as financially. So, and like Kyle said, uh, a lot of our students, they plan in advance and they get jobs in order to finance this trip. There's a nice picture of one of my former students in Heidelberg with her host mom. We are certainly gonna see some beautiful castles, but we actually have a lot other, a lot of other learning goals. First of all, to expand and improve language skills in an immersive environment. When they're staying with a family for seven days, it's all German. And they also develop intercultural communication skills. They're navigating ambiguous contexts and that's uncomfortable, but they learn a lot from it. And they also make lifelong international friends and contacts. I know for a fact that several of the students that have traveled with me in the past have already gone back and still have contact with their families. So I know Megan, are you planning to see your sister in the near future? Yesterday, oh whoops, uh, another, um, goal for me is to help them deepen understanding of cultural and historical topics that we study in German class. For example, multiculturalism or diversity, um, in the upper levels IB. You might not be aware of it, but Germany is the number two, um, immigration destination in the world after the United States. So what a lot of people think Germany looks like is not what it really looks like and we learn about that and how they have to deal with a lot of the same issues that we deal with in America. And they see that firsthand when they get there. So they experience that and all, a lot of other things, the global issues that we talk about in IB class. Whether that be historical, um, concerning divided, uh, Germany and its reunification. How, and you know, above all, how history affects modern society today. You might be aware that yesterday was the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Fall of the Wall. Those are two of my students in front of a section of the wall that remains called the Art Gallery. So on a trip, we have sixteen students going, planning to go with me. That's a huge increase. The first year I went, I had eight. The second time I went, I had twelve and this year it's sixteen, so I doubled the number. That's pretty good. Kids are excited to go. They're tenth through twelfth graders. They are in the language levels three through five in IB. We have stu- two students of color, one of which has a half-brother in Berlin, so she'll be visiting him. We are also going to be accompanied on the way over by three students from Hutchinson. That rounds it up to about twenty students later on in the trip when we're done with the family stay and going to school in Germany. Um, we will be joined by a group of students from Ohio whom, uh, the teacher, we've traveled with before, so. That's a Holocaust memorial in Berlin that we visit. It's amazing, um, very moving. Tour leaders, I will be a tour leader and Cheryl Wasson, uh, she is a colleague of mine who has been leading this particular tour for twenty-five years and I joined her tour, um, six years ago for the first time and we liked it so much that we've just kept on with her. I have enough students so that she can come along and be a chaperone with me. And, um, so Cheryl and I establish the tour destinations and we organize the family stays with our contacts in Germany. Our contacts being the school that I work with and the teachers that I work with in that school. And then we are also close with an organization in one of the towns that we stay in, um, that's been doing this for twenty-five years. So we know, I know a lot of the families that host the students already and they're wonderful. They go out of their way to make it a great experience for these kids. I know one kid said he really loved racing and they took him to a Formula One racing track. And, I mean, it's just amazing. They really go out of their way, so, great people in that town. Cedar Tours provi- is who we work with. They're based out of Wisconsin, but it's a company founded by former German teachers. So that's why they were originally picked by Cheryl to work with and, um, they're, they're flexible and they let us do a lot of the planning and they take care of the logistics. Kind of like she, uh, Kyle was talking about, ISE taking care of the, um, transportation and different bookings. So what are we gonna be doing? Uh, the first about week, seven to eight or nine days, I'm not a hundred percent sure if, it might be nine. Uh, we'll be staying with families near Frankfurt in Bensheim and Einhausen in Germany. Those families are selected by, um, two instructors that I work with at our GAP Partner School, the Geschwister Scholl Schule. Here's the group being greeted by their families when they arrive. They're all very weary and tired from the plane ride, but very excited to see their families. So we have a partner school in Bensheim, Germany. It's an officially a GAP school, which means it's a German-American partnership program school, which is sponsored by the foreign, German Foreign Office and the US Department of State with the goal of integrating students into everyday life and school so that they can have a coherent intercultural experience. Here are, um, a couple of my former students with their host families. They cried when they had to leave. And this would be Megan with her host sister and another student of mine who's a senior now with her host sister and that, those two came over here last year and we're in Saint Louis Park. The first week, what'll they be doing when they're staying with their families? I'll be seeing them a lot. They might get sick of me. In the morning, we're going to school? Yes, we're going to school. They actually are excited about it. I thought they were gonna groan, but. Um, we will be going to school at the Geschwister Scholl Schule. And in the afternoons, we'll be visiting nearby cultural and historical sites and we wanna, uh, we really wanna visit some innovative renewable energy projects in the area. So I'm looking forward to that. Just so you know, Geschwister Scholl Schule is named after the Scholl siblings of the White Rose, uh, anti-Nazi movement. I don't know if anybody's ever heard of that. It is a Gesamtschule, which is a new concept that combines all three s- track systems, the one that goes to the university and then the two other track systems that, uh, train them for technical, uh, professions. They te- they have grades five through twelve there, about fifteen hundred students total. The demographics are very similar to our high school, um, although obviously the diversity is coming from different parts of the world. Bensheim itself is, is similar in size to Saint Louis Park and in, in dem- demographics. We had an exchange in two thousand thirteen, a couple of students came here and we are planning to host more next year. This is a picture of the entrance of the school. It's really a very nice school. You guys are at it, yeah. It's a nice school. There's a courtyard that the kids get to hang out in on their twenty-minute breaks every couple of hours. Yeah, they're loving that. And that's a picture of two students that were here last year. You might've seen it in the Sun Sailor. So what are we doing after that first week when we say goodbye to our host families and everybody cries their eyes out on the bus? Um, we will be heading towards Nürnberg und Weimar, Berlin, München, Rotenburg, Ob der Tauber, and then in Austria to Salzburg. And then in Southern Bavaria, Garmisch-Patton-Kirchen. I don't know if any of those ring any bells? Yeah. Here's a picture of some of the places that we visit. In Munich, we do a bike tour of the city. That features a lot of historical sites. It's pretty fun. That was fun, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, other highlights, we go hiking in a gorge in Southern Bavaria at the foot of the Alps. Amazing. We do the bike tour. I'm really jonesing to get into the Hundertwasser House in Darmstadt because we study him. He's a, he was an artist slash architect from Austria. If you've ever seen his buildings, they're amazing. Uh, we want to visit the Mozart House and in the, in Berlin, we wanna see the Stasi Museum this year because that is a unit I'm doing right now. I'm so excited. And, uh, we'll be seeing the Berlin Underworlds and Checkpoint Charlie, of course. This is a picture of one of my students reporting on our next destination because each student will have to learn about and report on one of our destinations as we are in the bus. What does it cost? The fun costs about thirty-six hundred dollars plus tips. It's about a hundred more. Airfare makes about, about half the price. That includes two meals a day during the tour portion. When they're with their families, they're pretty much covered for the whole day. It also includes lodging, transportation, and enters tickets to all the museums and events. So we're gonna be there for nineteen days. And it's, I think that's a good price. And, um, we don't, we stay in youth hostels, which are really interesting. Yeah, it's, it's, in a good way, um, great food. It's really like culturally, you meet people from other countries and they're, you know, all your age and stuff. Here's a group of kids on top of a mountain. We went up on a gondola and I'm scared of heights, so it was a white knuckle ride for me. But it was fun for the kids. What do we do to prepare for the trip? We have six meetings that are about two hours long with the students and the parents. She remembers. And we talk about everything that has to do with the trip, even things that they wanna bring up. Um, all the same things that Kyle was talking about, money, packing, behavior, dress. How do you act and dress if we go to a concentration camp, if we go to a museum? I mean, the, they need to know what's appropriate and what's not appropriate and a lot of the things that we learn about and are touchy subjects, yeah, historically. So that's, you know, culture shock, homesickness, all that stuff. We talk about all that stuff. And we, um, also obviously go over the rules again and again and again. We follow the Minnesota State League of High School, um, rules. They sign a contract, their parents sign a contract, and, um, even the host families sign a contract saying we are not going to be getting tattoos, piercings, driving cars, yeah, going out at night alone, all that stuff. So they know very well what's, what's okay and what's not okay. Um, our company also insur- uh, offers insurance. They're covered. I would have to say, uh, something really awful would have to happen to you in Germany for you not to be able to pay for that right out of your pocket. Cause it's pretty, um, it's pretty, well, you know, affordable. Do you have any questions for me? That would be my presentation.
I don't know if I missed it, but did you mention how often you are, the group is speaking in German?
Uh, they're, well, they live with a German family for about nine days. So they'll be, uh, talking all the time, yeah. And then we'll be at school and that's happening in German. And then when we're traveling around, obviously, we're doing as much in German as we can. Yep.
Uh, Cheryl, you may be red, just about ready to do this, but I'd love to hear from the students.
Yeah.
What their most memorable or inspirational experiences have been. Could you also introduce yourselves as well?
All right, I'm Owen Schoger. I'm a senior this year. Um, so German, I be German this year. So memorable experiences, is what you guys, okay. One of the cool ones, at least for me, for with the host family, was we, um, went up to this old castle. It was like a ruin more than like a, like a castle that's like still put together in like a museum, so you kinda just got to wander around up there. It was like up in the mountains that were kinda nearby, uh, and it was just really cool and it's, um, you're with your German host family, so you're not like, not when you speak in English, it's all German stuff and you're just kinda up there enjoying the beauty of it all and the, um, so it's like mist rising off the mountains and stuff, but it was, it was just a really, uh, cool and memorable experience, I guess.
I'm Megan Hein. I'm also a senior and an IB German. And I think the most, um, memorable thing about the trip for me was the weekend that we spent alone with the host family. Um, I remember going into it, I was like terrified, but, um, they knew I like, like, I love to hike and so, um, we went on this really beautiful hike and after a while, you get really comfortable with speaking German and you like, I know for me, I stopped caring about if it was perfect and it turned out I could like speak better than I thought I could. So then for the rest of the trip, it was really fun, like, we would see like how much we could interact with the locals and we would ask people directions and that was, it was really fun to see like, everyone wanted to like improve their German skills and I think everyone really did, so.
I guess, thought of, um, one of the things that we often try to do is that when you're in Germany, a lot of times the shopkeepers will switch into English as soon as they can pick up an accent, cause they're trying to know be customer service. So one of the fun things is to try and get your German so good that the shopkeeper won't immediately switch into English when they're talking to you, so, that was always fun. Another cool thing that I actually was experiencing this year, so I'm in the IB History, um, HL class, so we're doing, uh, for a single-party states right now and we're studying Nazi Germany and it's really cool having been in Germany, so like I've been to Dokau concentration camp, I've been to Berlin, I've been in Munich where the, the Beer Hall Putsch was where Hitler tries to first take power, you, um, so you know, you've been to the Brandenburg Gate, you've been to all these places, you see some of the remaining buildings that are left, talking about the architecture and the huge squares where they would hold the rallies. So it's really cool to have that, um, context of actual be, being in the country and seeing the stuff in real life and then learning about it in a history class and having that whole new, like a whole different perspective on it all. Adds a lot of, lot of, uh, significance and weight to what you're learning, I guess, so that's a really cool thing to have.
And Nancy, that, that's a good segue for me to say, um, one of the only high schools, and there aren't that many around, that offer IB French, IB German, IB Spanish, IB Hebrew, and IB History. And it's a tremendous opportunity for the students that go to this high school.
Just a wonderful presentation. Did, was there anything else anybody wanted to say before we, or ask? Thank you. Very well done and very, um, answered all our questions and also got us all excited wanting to go with you, so.
Yeah.
Have a great time. I, I'm, I'm just assuming a vote will be favorable, but you know, we'll wait and see what happens.
I'll take it as a good sign.
It was a one-person poll. All right, next on the agenda, we are going to, it's listed as a multiple measurement rate update, an MMR update. And it's being presented by the Director of Assessment and Research, Prachi. Prachi, help me with your last name, I don't want to mispronounce.
Mukherjee.
Mukherjee. And we're really looking forward to hearing the overview of some of the data that we have. We try to gauge how we're doing with multiple data points and multiple ways of analyzing how we do as a district and this is, this is one of the key pieces that we look at.
Rob, I might need your help with this. Or somebody. Turn on Alamo.
See if it's on right?
Yeah.
See if it's on light. There we go.
Great, thank you.
I'll stand here while you can start.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. So, yes, I'm here to present about the multiple measurement rating for 2014. These results were released recently by the Minnesota Department of Education. I'm sorry, the resolution is not all that great. So, what is MMR? It stands for multiple measurement rating and it's Minnesota's accountability system. In the fall of 2011, President Obama invited states to apply for an ESEA, which is Elementary Secondary and Education Act, also known as No Child Left Behind. To the, he invited states to apply for waivers and Minnesota did and Minnesota's system is known as multiple measurement rating. The requirement was that we were going to build on and move beyond No Child Left Behind with attention to four key areas and I'll go through them one by one. One thing to remember, MMR is really a complex measurement, but it is intended to give schools information about where they're doing well and where they might be able to improve. So, one thing you might want to hold on to is that MMR is expressed as a percentage score, which means the closer you are to 100, the better you're doing. And it is also the intention of MMR to not set up schools to compare, to be compared against each other, but to compare itself against that 100% score. How close are they getting? What is their progress towards that 100% score? There are four domains of MMR and the first one is the proficiency domain, which is similar to how we used to do adequately progress. And briefly, what it means is there are proficiency targets for every student group and we get points or schools get points based on whether they're meeting those targets or not. So, that's the proficiency domain. And the change that happened with MMR compared to AYP is that in 2011, the proficiency targets were reset so that the goal became, by grade level, by content area, by student group, the goal became that every student group is going to cut its achievement proficiency or unproficiency in half, so that wherever they were in 2011, they were going to be better by 2017 by half as much. And I'll get into more of that when I get into proficiency. The second domain is a growth component and every school earns points based on if they are getting more growth out of students compared to predicted or expected growth. So, what's important to remember about this domain is that every student is accounted for. The third domain is closing the achievement gap and this is a slight variation on the growth domain. And what it does is with the goal of closing the achievement gap, it says, "For student groups that have been traditionally low performing, are we closing the gap as a school comparing that group's performance to the traditionally higher performing groups?" And the last domain is the graduation rate domain and this only applies to our high school, obviously. Schools can earn a maximum of 25 points in each domain and this is rounded up to be expressed as an MMR percentage score. So, here is our proficiency performance by school over four years, 2011, 12, 13, and 14. So, you can see that the bars that go up all the way, they seem full, they are the instances when the school earned complete points for proficiency in that particular year. Anytime that the bars fall short, it means that there were certain student groups that did not meet their proficiency targets. And what's happening as we move from 2011 to 2014 is that the proficiency targets are increasing in order to get to that target of 2017. So, anytime a student group is not performing to meet that target, a school is going to lose points. You might notice that in 2012, there are several schools which did not generate a lot of points for proficiency. And this is because, I'll get into more detail in the next slide, it's because free and reduced lunch group of students did not meet their proficiency targets. And that often constitutes a big portion of the student group, so it impacts the points earned negatively. You can see that in 2014, most of our schools earned close to 25 points at the elementary level, but at the middle school, we earned 14.13 points and at the high school, we earned So, this slide here goes into details about every one of those years for proficiency, 2011, 12, 13, and 14. What you see, for example, is Aquila in reading was accountable for, it had enough student groups to be held accountable for proficiency. In 2011, there were seven such groups. And in Aquila Math, there were seven such groups across the four years. There have to be at least 20 students in any one student group enrolled on October 1 to be held accountable for proficiency targets.
I have a question.
Yes.
About one slide back.
Okay.
And it was on Susan Lindgren.
Yes.
And year 2012, it was, it's just that, could you, did you look into that data at all?
Yes, so that's what I was talking about, that you see in 2012, there were, Susan Lindgren got a single-digit, 7.63, Middle School got 9.07, Peter Hobart got 9.56. And that's because the free and reduced lunch groups at those schools did not make their proficiency targets. And they range anywhere from about a quarter, 25% to 39%. And Peter Hobart's being a free and reduced lunch school, a Title I school, has a large number of students and when they don't make proficiency targets, the points are weighted by the size of the student group, so it has a bigger impact. For the people watching at home, I'm sorry, these slides are really hard to read, but I'll try to speak to them. So, when you're looking at this slide where the groups not making proficiency are listed, you can see that in 2012, which is the year that Ken, you had questions about, Peter Hobart in math, the free and reduced lunch eligible student group did not make proficiency, Susan Lindgren math, the same group did not make proficiency, middle school math, the same group did not meet proficiency, and the same thing for high school math. And if you move over to 2014, you can see that the student groups that did not meet proficiency targets are listed by school and by subject area. And I'll list the student groups just so people at home can understand what the groups are. There's the all-student group, there's the Native American student group. Again, there have to be 20 students in that group enrolled on October 1 in order to be held accountable for proficiency. Asian Pacific Islanders, Hispanic, Black, White students. Then we have the special programs, students eligible for free and reduced lunch, students receiving special education services, and students in limited English proficiency programs. The second domain is the domain of growth. And as I was saying, growth measures the ability of schools to get more than what is expected out of a group of students or out of every student. The growth scores can only be calculated for students who have at least two years of data, obviously. So, we have growth scores for students in grades four to eight and 11 for math and four to eight and 10th grades for reading. I have an example of a growth score, so if you have a third grader, this'll make sense.
Prachi, can I just ask, why not, why do the growth rates not start to fourth grade? Why not K through three, so that we see how we're doing right from the get-go?
I would love that, but state tests begin in third grade.
So, this is based on the MCA, it's not based on the other tests we have available to us?
Map.
The map test.
Great question. Yes, this is only based on state tests, which we use for federal accountability. Popularly known as the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, MCAs, which most of our students take, a very, very small number, less than 2%, take the MTAS. So, how is growth, how are growth scores calculated? Here's an example. All the students who got a score of 330 in third grade, when they're in fourth grade, the state calculates how they scored in fourth grade and then determines what's going to be counted as high growth, medium growth, and low growth. So, with an example of a score of 330 in third grade, in fourth grade, all the students who get 435 or higher are counted as high growth. Anyone between 424 and 434 is medium growth and anybody lower than 434 is low growth. So, in the growth domain, we get more points when we get a student with a score of 330 to score 435 or higher.
So, that's reset for each cohort?
Yes.
There's no absolute standard, they're just being compared by themselves.
Exactly.
So, the next year, what's low growth this year could be high growth next year and...
Absolutely. It changes based on how the cohort is performing, so it's very real-time.
And what does the 330 represent? Is that more of a minimum number where we say they have to get at least that for it to be reasonable or is that like a, how does that, why is it 330?
I picked that example at random, but that's a good segue into, at any grade level, the score represents, there are three places there. So, the first digit refers to the grade level, so a 330 can only be earned by a third grader. And then a 50 is the minimum, a 350 is the minimum to be proficient, meets, and a 330 is a does-not-meet. So, there are four achievement levels, does-not-meet, partially-meets, meets, or exceeds. So, a 330 would have been a student who does not meet standards.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I was getting at, is are we, by using that cutoff, are we skimming off students who we should be measuring? But, you're saying that kind of encompasses people who are not yet proficient on up, right?
Yes, so every student, regardless of where they are on that achievement level scale, have a score of high, medium, or low for growth. And you can see in this example that even by making high growth, they're not going from does-not-meet to proficient, they're still in does-not-meet with a 435. If they get higher into 440, they're going to get into the next achievement level, which is partially-meets. So, I would say it's not aggressive by any means.
So, it's like a standard deviation above, if they make a deviation, three deviations, then they move on up to excellent?
Kind of, it's half a standard deviation above is high growth.
Okay.
So, here, what I have for you is just for reading, what is the percentage of students making high growth? At Aquila, Peter Hobart, by each of our schools. So, typically, you know, because there are three of these categories, low, medium, and high, we tend to, if, if nothing is happening that significant, we tend to group students in threes, you know. So, anytime we are getting high growth out of more than 30% of our students, we can consider ourselves moving in the right direction. So, if you're getting 50% of our students who got high growth, better than 40%. So, the goal always is to get high growth from a larger number of our students. And here are the numbers for math, percent of students making high growth. Now, these students include students who were proficient as well as not proficient in year one compared to year two, which is when the growth is calculated. What is helpful is that we have the same concept in our map tests. We look at students meeting or exceeding typical growth. So, the concept is familiar to our teachers and staff. Do you have any questions? I'll move on to the third domain, which is achievement gap reduction. And we're building on the idea of growth, but now what we're doing is taking growth for and aggregating it that for a group of students. So, the comparisons that are made for which schools get points is we look at students of color. So, for example, Black students versus statewide White student performance. Hispanic students versus statewide White student performance. Because traditionally, White students are higher performing, we're trying to get, we're trying to close the achievement gap between other student groups and White students. And for special programs, they're compared, special education students, for example, their growth is compared to non-special education students statewide. This slide here just shows for the four years, the groups of students for whom we are closing the achievement gap. And I will draw your attention to the fact that for several years now, our goal has been to close the gap between Black and White students' performance. So, we would expect that Black students would show up a lot more on this graph, on this table, but they don't. So, that clearly identifies an area of more work for us. The last domain is the graduation rate domain and that is only applicable to our high school, like I said. The change with MMR is that graduation rates are looked at for every student group, not just in the aggregate. Before MMR, it used to only be looked at for all students and now, every student group that has at least 20 students is considered. The targets are 90% for all students and for each student group. And we have some good news here, as you have been hearing about. We have the White and Black students here graphed. I did something, I shouldn't have. I did something, I shouldn't have. Did I turn it off somehow? Am I finger hit one of these buttons? Thank you, yes. Yeah. Yes, thanks, God. So, the first set of three bars is for white student graduation rates at the high school, and the next set of bars is for the same group at the state. And you can see that in 2013, graduation rates are always a year behind. In 2013, we had a graduation rate of 93%, the four-year graduation rate for our white students, and the state was at 85%. So, definitely, we're staying ahead of the state. And for our Black students, our graduation rate was 83% in 2013 compared to 58% statewide.
That's just great news.
It is great news, yes. Lastly, I would just like to close with, how do we use these MMR results? So, the district works has shared these results, these data, with the principals, and we have looked at each of the domains and looked at more data that we get to go in-depth and considered, where do we see gains and where do we see room for improvements? We look at this data reflecting on our beliefs about what we think is possible to achieve and how we're going to go about achieving the goals that we have set for ourselves. And the steps, the next steps and action plans are aligned with our World's Best Workforce goal, also of closing the achievement gap. Take any questions at this time?
Sure, I had a question, Prachi, about on the slide a couple ago, where you identified that in the growth of 2011 through 2014, it seems like the Black students aren't closing the gap. I was wondering, I know you, you can't see the difference between, let's say, African-American Black versus a African Black, but is there any way, can you speak to how it could have changed, or anything in that?
I think what you're asking me is if the lived experience of students who are Black, who grew up in the US, is different from the experiences of students who migrate to this country. Yes, like you pointed out, that data, we cannot divide it up, except we can look at our English language learners, the LEP data, but not all our students who are African Blacks are in LEP programs. So, it is difficult to decipher in that respect. And at the same time, I think, this is my opinion, is that we need to look at how we deal with race. Definitely, immigrant status is another layer of it, but whether students tend to achieve less well when they are of color, I, I think that's at the root of the problem in the United States.
I agree. And how, how the content is being received or delivered.
Yes, yes, it goes to our instruction, and are we changing how we do school based on the students who are in front of us? Because clearly, we are very good at achieving with our white students. I mean, we have never, not met our proficiency targets, so definitely, we know how to do that, and we just have to figure out how to do that for all our students.
I can tell Bruce is getting ready.
I, I'm still dismayed by this data. And, and the reason I'm dismayed by it is, I heard RT Ryback speak, Julie and I were at a conference on, on Friday for Association of Metropolitan School Districts, and RT mentioned that, you know, in Minnesota, we have some of the highest achieving students anywhere. How can we have this really great achievement and still have the highest gap in the nation? I mean, it just, it just, it defies description to me. I, I've been working on this problem, I've been thinking about this problem for the 13 years I've been on the school board, and I'm not seeing the solutions that I want to see. And I'm not hearing the explanations that I, I think ought to be there. Obviously, they're not simple explanations, but closing this gap is absolutely the, I mean, every member of this board is committed to it. Every teacher that I know is committed to it, every principal I know. Yet, in this whole state, we don't seem to be making much progress, and quite frankly, on, at our high school, the gap just continues to exist. I'm proud of the fact of our graduation rate. I mean, I, I think that's wonderful. I believe that's part of closing the gap, but I'm still dismayed by the scores. I, it's a frustrating thing to me, and I, somebody's got to be doing research. Now, again, there are districts that seem to close the gap, and yet, then it pops up again later on. I, I, I'm just, it, it's total frustration to me that we can't do better at this.
Prachi, we're, this MMR is on the MCA testing, and I know, we, we are also still doing the MAP testing?
Yes, absolutely, because the MCA results come to us after summer, you know, August. And so, MAP really helps us get an early reading on where are students in the fall, so that, as a result of summer loss, all students go through, most students go through some summer loss, or wherever they are in the spring is not where they end up when they come to us back in the fall. So, we have a better read on where are students in the fall, so we can meet them at their level and accelerate their growth.
And the MAP testing that we get more immediate results from, I mean, we get the test results sooner, I should say.
Yes, immediately, within 24 hours.
They also have a growth measure, so we can tell what, what typical growth would be for a year and whether we're exceeding that.
Yes, we use that extensively.
And in order to close the gap, we need students to make more than typical growth.
Correct.
Don't we? I mean, we have to do better than typical, and that's a hard task, and one we're trying to figure out how to do.
As long as we understand that typical is not really set with the idea of any laudable goal, typical is just describing how students grow. And if you do typical growth, it means you're maintaining your position, and that's fine if I'm at grade level, but if I'm below grade level, of course, I have to make more than typical growth.
We have to do better than typical growth, and, and I think our teachers need to be, I'm glad we do that data, I'm glad the teachers can see where they're having more than typical growth success with students, because if the student isn't yet too proficient, they can still see success.
Yes.
It's just measured in a different way, and it doesn't show so much in these, the MCA data as much, but I think that's important, that our teachers, where they do have some success, can see it, and where they don't, they need to learn from it. And we need to learn from it as a district to help them.
And the growth domain does give you points for students, regardless, the example that I was talking about, that Joe had questions about, I mean, that was great to point out, that I took a student of 330, does-not-meet, and we can still get points for that student as long as the student is making more than expected growth on the state tests also.
And that's one of the differences between the MMR and what we had before, right?
Yes.
Because we were doing growth, that was the, one of the major complaints, is that a school could be doing great work with lower-performing students and be called a failing school, but yet, this acknowledges that there are, you could be doing a great job by getting higher-than-expected growth, better-than-typical growth with your students.
Yes.
You're actually a very good school then, as opposed to a failing school.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yep, yep.
And to piggyback on that, as individual students get better, the group of students will get better and the results will show eventually. But I had a question, I thought, maybe I took the note wrong, but did you say that the MAP test, does only 2% of our students take it, or everybody takes it?
No, what I said is, the MCA tests, which are the state tests, Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, almost all students take MCAs, except less than 2% who qualify for MTAS. They're severely collectively challenged, yeah.
I, I have a MAP question. I think, I, I know a number of schools have correlated MAP scores with MCA scores, and I think I've heard you talk about that as well. And it seems, for several years, I've heard, in January and February, we tend to think our MAP scores are showing that our students will do better than they end up doing on the MCAs. My vague recollection of that, that pattern the last few years. What's your professional assessment of any correlation between the two, and is that a pattern that you see happening?
My professional assessment, based on the data, is that, I expect nothing else, more than 90% accuracy in predicting proficiency. And we get that prediction based on our fall test results from MAP. So, once students are tested in the fall, schools can look at what percent is projected to be proficient. Now, remember, this is a projection based on a group of students. When it comes down to specific students, it might be that Prachi was predicted to be proficient, but she ended up being partially, and Julie was predicted to be not proficient, but she ended up. So, but overall, the group of students, it's more than 90% accurate, closer to 95% accuracy.
So, we should know, or kind of do know, what's likely, 90% likely to happen on those MCA scores in the middle of the year?
Yes, yes. Every time they take the test, there's a projection component that we can look at.
When we take the MAP test, you're saying the correlation is like 90%, you can tell?
I'm saying the prediction is more than 90% accurate about, yes, proficiency on state There's a reason why Minnesota is one of the highest users of MAP nationwide.
And I think we have to remember that the MCA testing, traditionally, it's been kind of a moving target. The test keeps changing, you have to then have some time to adjust curriculum accordingly, because of course, you, when the test changes, the kids haven't had a chance to learn what it is they're supposed to be learning. Is that part of the problem?
Yes and no. The test changes in response to the curriculum being updated, and there's a requirement in the state law about how often, how regularly, the curriculum needs to be reviewed. So, whenever a new, whenever new standards are adopted, two years have to go by for the state to even develop test items. So, the new test does not come into being until at least two years of curriculum implementation. So, yes, it's a moving target, but at the same time, the curriculum has to be kept up to date in a certain sense. Yeah, so, it's always a challenge to make sure that we are actually delivering the curriculum that we are being held accountable to deliver.
Do other states do tests like the MCA? I mean, should Minnesota get out of the MCA, the testing business, and leave it to the national tests, like the ACT and the NWEAs? Is there a better way to do this? Is, is the testing part of the problem?
You're asking the wrong person. No, we cannot, no state can get out of it, as, there's a way to get out of it if you don't take Title I funds, but every state has to fulfill this requirement, and every state has come up with its tests that are aligned to its state standards. And, you know, the MCA state tests are a huge investment, and it goes through so much scrutiny and so much work from so many groups of people. This is the best test we have aligned to our state standards. It's the best test that we have to assess how students are performing on our state standards. I mean, that's not the answer you were...
We should know, all students will be taking the ACT this year and the Exploring Plan, so we do have that national test, but that doesn't align completely with our curriculum, with our standards, and therefore, our curriculum. So, there are some states that have threatened to give up their federal money and not take the test. I'm not aware, it seems to me there was maybe one that came really close, but I don't know that anybody's actually done that. North Carolina, there is one, okay.
An Exploring Plan and ACT, just like you pointed out, Julie, are going to be given to all students at specific grade levels. This year, however, because they don't align as closely with state standards, 10th and 11th graders will still need to take the MCAs in reading and math, and 8th graders will need to take it for reading, math, and science. This is not a bad thing. We did not have any way of comparing how students are doing with respect to state standards before these came along.
And remember, the testing has forced us to measure, well, part of the law too, to measure all kids. We weren't doing such a great job of measuring all kids. So, now we're focused on it, and a lot of districts are, you know? You could be a great school district, but all of a sudden, hey, a lot of people learn while our Black students aren't doing so well. So, that leads to some change, and people trying to do that.
Prachi, thank you very much. It feels like it's been a while since we've heard from you, so I'm glad to have you here. Thank you.
Thank you. Call me back anytime.
All righty. Next on the agenda, we're going to hear from our superintendent on closing, a closing the achievement gap update. Rob Metz, our superintendent.
I'm going to bring up Prachi right back up here, Frida Bailey and Carrie Ross. Good evening, board members. This is a perfect transition here to follow from Prachi's data presentation into an attempt to answer Bruce's question, actually, which is, how are we working to close this gap? And, first of all, I want to say that this school district is very fortunate to have a board that's so devoted to getting this task done. I mean, that's the first, and probably the most important step, and we've got that. So, tonight, we're going to take a few minutes to show you some of the work that's underway. I'm beginning with...
Just, I'm, I'm sorry, Rob, to jump in, but...
Yes.
It's not, it's not the most important step. I, I don't want to put us in that role. The most important step is the work that's going on in the schools and in the classrooms every day, so I, at least from my perspective, I...
Thank you, Julie. Sometimes that doesn't happen, though, unless it's important to, to the board, and it is important to the board here, so I wanted the community to know that. I'm starting with something called the Courageous Conversations Compass, because one, this is a tool that we are using across the district. It helps us to stay centered on this work. And I'll start with just a quick loop around the compass. There's an intellectual answer to this question of how to close this gap. There's also a relational answer, there's an emotional answer, and there's a moral answer. And one of the things, speaking for myself, personal, local, and immediate, which is some of the terminology we use here, is I tend to start on the intellectual side and think that there's two or three things, that if we just do this, we're going to close this gap. But it turns out to be a lot more complicated than that, and the answer is going to involve all corners of this compass. So, we're trying to use the compass more and more as a reminder to us that the answer to this question is not going to come from just one corner of this compass or the other, it's going to come from a combination of all, all four corners. We know at least where we're going to look to find out, when this gap starts being closed, how will we know? And there's going to be some key places that are outlined in our World's Best Workforce Plan, that when we start seeing movement, this is where we're going to see it. We're going to notice that students entering kindergarten and/or leaving kindergarten, that gap is going to start closing. Those are the two, probably the most key places we're going to see, followed right behind by reading well by third grade. There's no doubt that if our students of color, especially our Black students, leave third grade reading at grade level, that this gap is going to be closing. 3rd grade, reading at grade level, that this gap is going to be closing. So, two really key points. We're also carefully measuring students entering middle school and leaving middle school, especially in math. When we are really operating on full cylinders, we're going to have everybody reading well by 3rd grade, and we're going, we're going to have students leaving 8th grade being proficient in math. And then, high school graduation and college career ready. And the board has heard us already talking about, high school graduation is not enough anymore. So, we need to make sure that students are not just graduating, but when they graduate, they're going to be ready to leave here and be successful in their next endeavor. Some of the categories that we're addressing to close this gap, they fall, they fall into, the work that we're doing falls into some, some chunks. And I want to take a minute to talk about each one, and then I'm going to show you what's being done in each one. So, first of all, there's a curricular chunk, and this is what we've been talking about earlier tonight a little bit, about what are we teaching? Are we teaching the right things? Are we teaching to the standards? So, Les Bork, the middle school principal, sometimes describes it as, "The state's taking us to California, and we're going to New York." To him, that means, if you look at the curriculum that we're actually teaching, are we teaching the state standards? And if not, how do we get that corrected quickly? I'll make it a personal story. So, I have three children. Two of my children would have passed the state reading test if they skipped school every other day. There was really nothing that was going to happen in school that was going to ensure that they were going to pass the state reading test, because they were going to pass it no matter what, because of what happened at home, and their life experiences, and their natural talent. The other one of mine, he didn't have any room for error. In his case, he needed to make, his school needed to make sure that they were teaching him the state standards. Okay? So, a lot of our students that are at risk, they don't have room for error. If we're not teaching the state standards, they're going to be at risk, and that's going to come back and catch us, and it's going to hurt them. So, we need to make sure that our curriculum is aligned with the state standards from preschool to 12th grade. Another answer lies in the instructional area. We need to make sure that we're using best practices in all areas. There's a ton of research on educational best practices. Sometimes, we do things because we're used to it, or because the adults like it better. But we are looking back at key areas in our schooling system and making sure that we're using best practices, starting in all-day K. Adult equity development, this is something that I think Ken and Prachi were starting to discuss at the earlier presentation. When you have a district that's got 95% white teachers, and they're teaching students that are 60% white, there's a dynamic there that has to be understood. And the only way to do that is to really take the adults through a careful understanding of that dynamic, because it makes a big difference how the adult approaches that class. And the better trained they are in how to do that, the better the students are going to do. Our evaluations have something to do with this. I got to see the state legislature Finance Committee and Education Committee talk about the new teacher evaluation system. Both in our new principal evaluation system and in our, in our new teacher evaluation system, there is now a specific component about the achievement gap, where in the past, we could go through an evaluation and never talk about this. Now, that's never going to happen, because it's a required component in all our evaluations. Each school is developing a school improvement plan. They are better in some schools than others, and this is something that we need to make sure that in every one of our schools, there is a system that is followed, that everyone understands, and everyone knows. Back when I was an elementary principal, I went off and studied schools that closed the gap, and I went to find out, how did they do this? And I did that even a couple of years ago, when I was the high school principal. I went to an elementary school in Eden Prairie that had literally closed the gap, and sat down with the principal and said, "How did you do this?" One of the things they all have in common is they have a school-wide system that everybody understands, and everybody uses it. And it's a way for them to keep, they know what they're keeping track of, they know how they're measuring it, they meet to talk about it, and they strategize together, and they put plans in place together in a very orchestrated manner. And in a school like that, when a new teacher comes in, there's no question that they're going to become part of the system that's used at that school. In other words, they're not all independent contractors, they're part of a system, a school-wide system, and we need to keep working toward making sure that all of our schools have a system like that. There are some targeted interventions. The board knows about some of these. For example, at the high school, there's something called the High Achievement Program, otherwise known as HAP, that specifically works to get black and brown students in AP and IB classes. Those can work from time to time, and we have several at this district that are working. And then, we know that part of the answer lies in us being more responsive to families. The analogy I use is that the schools really belong to the students and the families. The employees just work here, including me. So, our job is to reform our schools so that they are home to the students, not so they are home to the adults. And there's no doubt that students who come to a school where they feel valued, and they feel at home, and they feel empowered, are going to do better. So, these broad categories are areas that we're attacking to address the achievement The next part of this, I've divided into different years. So, I want you to see things that are already happening, things that are currently happening, and things that are going to be happening, that, that have something to do with closing the gap. And these things are already in place, or at least they're already happening to a great degree. In the curricular area, we started a curriculum study last year, and this is, well, you may have questions for me later, but Carrie can answer many of these questions, along with Prachi and Frida. We affectionately call them the KFP team, KPF team? KFP team? Carrie, Prachi, Frida. They go from school to school and provide assistance to schools in all of these areas. But I'll start with curriculum. So, last year at the elementary level, working in elementary graded bands, we identified common expectations in each grade level. So, for example, what do we really expect from a 4th grader in regards to the state standards? And we identified achievement-level descriptions, which we call ALDs, and placed them within the elementary curriculum. So, now, if I'm a 3rd grader, I know what is expected, if I'm a 3rd grade teacher, I know what is expected of the students in my grade level, because I've identified the, the ALDs, the achievement-level descriptors. We've discussed the expectations and the, the level of rigor that's needed and expected at each grade level, and those descriptors have been placed in the curriculum. You'll see in a little bit what we're doing this year. But last, last year, a lot of work began in the elementary school curriculum area. Also, under evaluation, the principal evaluation system was put in place last year, and Scott Myers is here, our high school principal in the audience. He's got a meeting coming up with me very soon, where we are going to look at the achievement of the high school, especially in a relationship to the achievement gap, and how well we do is going to have something to say about his evaluation. That's new last year at all of our schools. We have a lot of adult equity development going on. We've been sending teachers to Beyond Diversity Training for many years. It's just an expectation here that every one of our teachers goes to the initial two days of equity training. But beyond that, last year, we started an, an equity coaching process for our teachers, which, which I think is extremely valuable, where the coach goes right into the classroom and helps coach the teacher toward closing the gap in their classroom. And this district team that comes to many of these board meetings is going through pretty intensive equity training ourselves. Also in place, we have some schools with very good school improvement plans. I called out Peter Hobart here, because I think they're the farthest along in this process, of having a system that is clearly known and clearly identified at Peter Hobart's school, and that everyone is using, and everyone's bought in, everyone understands the terminology, everyone understands what they're doing, and they're working together. I was at Peter Hobart last week, and the principal, Shelley Nielsen, was telling me they finished up, they have occasional meetings where they, school leaders stay after school and look at the progress of every single student in the school, and assign interventions to those students, make educational decisions about those students. They were there till seven or eight at night the night before, doing this work at Peter Hobart. And then, I meant, I showed here some of the targeted program examples. The ones that come to mind most are the high school, for example, the HAP program, College Possible, which many board members know about. And really, our early learning programs have really stepped out and done a tremendous job. In the past, the early learning programs in St. Louis Park were very siloed. There were four or five different programs at Central School that were, were operating very independently of each other. Now, they all use the same curriculum, they all use the same assessments, and they're working very hard on developing their equity capacity in the early learning programs. This year, we carried this work even further. We're in the middle of this right now. The curriculum studies continue, and now they're focused on the high school and the middle school, starting with math, and then we'll be moving toward language arts. But Carrie Ross has worked with the middle school staff, the high school staff, brought in outside experts, and they're going through very meticulously the curriculum that we're currently teaching, and finding gaps and holes with what we're doing, with what the state standards truly are, and working to fill those gaps. And as I said, much of the work the first half of this year has been meeting with middle school and high school teachers, and it's going to shift to language arts very soon at the middle school and high school. In the instructional category, I put two areas where we've definitely changed practice. One is with all-day kindergarten, the other is with middle school acceleration classes in reading and math. So, I'll use all-day kindergarten as, as a perfect example of changes in best practice. In the past, our kindergarten teams at each school may have operated a little bit differently from one another, and even sometimes, teacher to teacher, may have operated a little differently to one another. This past year, we created an all-day kindergarten task force, went out to find out what is truly best practice, and have implemented that at every school in St. Louis Park. And we're seeing very good signs this far into the year, that our kindergarteners this year are clearly ahead of our kindergarteners in the past. And I'm planning for halfway through this year, coming back and giving you a data-driven update of where our kindergarteners are compared to past years, but I'm excited about it. Same thing in our middle school acceleration classes in reading and math. We continue our equity work. I mean, this is something that we just can't let go of, and we expanded our equity coaching this year for teachers. We're now developing an equity coaching model for principals. The principals started asking about a month into the year, "Can I have an equity coach? I need an equity coach to lead this work at my school." And so, we've made some arrangements, and that's going to be getting started very soon. The evaluation process continues to change. Now, each individual teacher is, is being evaluated partially on how well they close the gap in their class, in their school, and in the district. So, just as a quick reminder, 35% of the new teacher evaluation rating is based on student achievement. The way we're making up that 35% is in three parts. Did the district meet its closing the gap goal? Did your building meet its closing the gap goal? And did you meet your closing the gap goal? In each of those areas, every teacher in this district is going to receive a, a score, and that's going to be combined to come up with 35% of their teacher evaluation. So, how well we close the gap at the building, at the school, and at the classroom level is part of the new teacher evaluation system. We've added a cultural liaison this year for our Somali families, and we have more work to do in that area. And we have a World's Best Workforce Plan that clearly identifies this as the goal, and gives us clear measuring sticks, and hopefully makes this personal, local, and immediate to each individual teacher in the district. Then, into the future, this is very tentative, but I wanted to show you some things here. This is still in the works, no final decisions. But this curriculum work has to continue. We have to make sure that we are truly teaching the state standards, that our curriculum is aligned with the state standards. It seems simple, but we have work to do in this area, and this is going to be a multi-year task. Thankfully, we have Carrie, which I try not to put too much pressure on her, but she knows these state standards better than anybody, and she's taking our teachers through these processes where they're getting a chance to map out their curriculum, compare it to the state standards, and fill in any gaps and holes. And it's absolutely imperative that we get this done. In the area of instruction, we need to keep working to make sure we're using best practices. We have a couple of things on the docket for next year. First of all, we, I believe we've made very good progress in all-day K, making sure that we're teaching kindergarten in the best practice way possible. We need to make sure that when those little people get to 1st grade next year and 2nd grade, that our 1st and 2nd grade teachers are also using best practice. That's got to be a top priority, along with remodeling our reading intervention, Title I and EL programs. They go hand in hand. First, you have to have the classroom instruction following best practice, and then you need to make sure that, in our school terminology, our Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions follow the same philosophy. So, for example, in all-day K, nobody is leaving that classroom during the 90 minutes of literacy. Then, the intervention specialists come into the classroom for a 45-minute intervention time, which kindergarten teachers call "win time," okay? That's working in all-day K. We need to make sure that that continues into 1st grade. We don't want to pull students out for Title I or for reading intervention during that 90-minute literacy block, because we know it's working this year in kindergarten. So, it's, once we get the classroom instruction following best practice, then the reading intervention, Title I, EL, all the, all the supports need to follow along. We're going to continue expanding our equity work, hopefully having more equity coaches next year than this year. Want to thank the Teachers Union, PAT, for helping with that this past year, and I think we're staying close, closely aligned with that philosophy. It seems to be working. And coaching for both teachers and, and principals, and district staff. Also, next year, we're going to be digging into the digital learning opportunities for all of our students. We've just begun this work. We had our first digital learning budget session last week, where we're trying to identify sources of funding that are ongoing, that we can rely on from year to year, that we can use to expand our digital learning. And we know we have to do a lot of work reaching out to parents and students, getting alternative voices to the table in this district. The families can tell us, for the most part, what we need to change to do better, to help their students do better, and we need to reach out to them and, and find ways to hear their voices. So, if I was going to summarize, I would say, there's no one quick silver bullet to closing this gap. There are categories that we need to address, and we are addressing them. And this group is very deeply involved in the weeds in addressing these categories with me, with the building leaders, the principals, and with the teachers. So, I know you probably have questions for me, and we're going to bring them up here to try to answer some of these questions for me.
So, I'd love to hear from any one of you, what's a bright spot that you've seen? You really were tackling, especially all-day K, that task force, and then, we've seen some results now, and so is there something you can share with the community about a bright spot?
I'll let Carrie do that.
Thank you. Board members, I would say the bright spot for us, the biggest change in practice and the biggest return on investment in our training and our opportunities to collaborate as kindergarten teachers, is the emphasis on small group instruction. So, a small group instruction means a time during... small-group instruction means a time during reading and math where teachers take small groups of kids together and teach them a specific skill or a specific strategy or a specific something based on their needs. And what's basically different this year is that we're asking every classroom teacher to do that with their lowest-achieving students daily. And it wasn't necessarily something that was happening systematically or daily in the past, but we know that's a best practice. Rob talked a lot about best practice and good pedagogy, and we know that students are going to grow the most in a smaller learning environment. So students that need the most support get small-group instruction from their classroom teacher, and maybe a specialist, too, in addition to that during the wind time or during another part of the day. But we're really seeing a positive impact in that. And our superintendent visits kindergarten classrooms regularly, as I do, and almost any time of day, you could go into a kindergarten classroom and see a small group of students working together on a very specific, very intentional learning objective, and it's really a very bright spot. We're very encouraged by what we see.
And I would add, Karen, I mean, I see bright spots all over the district. To follow up on what Carrie said, I was in a kindergarten class at Aquila today. They were doing math. There were at least four different groups operating, all doing different tasks, all with adult assistance. It was really marvelous to see. And I see a willingness, a good climate for this work to be done, and, you know, the talent standing beside me here to get this done. This takes time. I mean, if you just look at even one area, the curriculum part, it's going to take several years to make sure that at every spot in this district, what we're teaching is what we should be teaching. And we have got a great start, but it's going to be a while to get this done. I was talking to someone the other day, and they were saying, you should hire more teachers of color. And I said, well, we are trying, because that's an important part of this, too. I know from talking to Rick, our HR director, that somewhere in state teacher programs, about 10% to 15% of teacher graduates are students of color, teachers of color. And what happens is all of the districts in Minnesota, especially all the suburban districts in Minnesota, are fighting over that same 10%. So increasing the pool of potential teachers of color is critical. So how do you increase the pool? Well, to be a teacher of color, you have to graduate from college. You had to have gone to college, prepared, ready for the world's best workforce. You would have had to graduate from high school first to do that, and had a good experience in school to be wanting to be a teacher. So graduation rate of black students, for example, is an important number. You would have had to pass all of your ninth-grade classes to graduate from high school. That's a really important number. You would have had to be reading well by third grade, for the most part, if 12 years later, you were going to be a beginning teacher in Minnesota. And you would have had to left kindergarten ready for first grade. So I answered the question by saying, the best thing Minnesota ever did to develop more teachers of color was to add all-day kindergarten, because 13 years from now, we're going to be reaping benefits from that. Now, that's 13 years out. We can't wait that long for all of this work. But I give that example because some of this takes a thoughtful, systematic, step-by-step process, and some of it takes urgency. And we go back and forth every day. I could tell you stories just from today, going from the urgency to the thoughtful, step-by-step, strategic process. And that takes me back to the compass, because this is how this is going to get done, by circling around that compass and hitting all corners as we go through this work.
So you spent a lot of time talking about curriculum and aligning instruction.
A lot of time.
But how often are those curriculum standards, are they changing at the state level? I mean, that seems, I'd love to pay attention to your answer.
Well, it seems like they change frequently, but really what happens is they don't change any more than every nine years. Sometimes it's even longer than nine years, but nine years is the shortest cycle. And it seems quick, in part because it takes us a while to figure out what they actually mean and what we're actually going to do about it and how it's going to be assessed. So just when we get to our groove, we're starting to think about change. The next one to change will be mathematics.
So that's a little bit of the worry. I mean, I get it. I mean, that's the problem with teaching the state standards. I mean, these kids, if you're not exactly aligned, they're learning something. It may not be what they're being tested on totally every time, but hopefully, we're teaching them something that we feel is important. But I get it. That's just a, I'm not saying not to do it. I mean, it makes sense if, hey, that's what the test is, and that's what you expected to know. But I'm worried, because then they change. You get your groove, you figure it out. You're spending a lot of time and effort on that.
It is challenging, and, you know, like when we...
And some students obviously can adapt well, because they're still passing despite the change if we hadn't been, so...
Right. And some of it is on us, too. Kids will rise to the occasion. We're seeing that in kindergarten. Our kindergarteners are doing things that we were determined a year ago that they couldn't do. So some of it is on us as the adults in the classroom. But we also up the rigor every time we redo standards, in part because the more we look at standards and the more we revise standards, the better, more clear understanding we have of what college and career-ready means. So Minnesota happens to have their act together a little bit more than other states in terms of standards design, but that doesn't make it any easier, and that doesn't make it any less of an arduous process. And it does feel that nine years goes by pretty quickly.
So do you have a concern, though? I mean, or, I mean, does that temper, the importance of, I mean, I realize we've got to address all these...
Yeah, I'm not really, I'm not concerned about it at all. I think by the time the math standards will be released in the 16, 17 school year. And by that time, we will have hit our stride here in St. Louis Park. We'll have a process down, and we'll be a lot more adept at incorporating new standards, because we'll have such an understanding of how standards work and what they mean and how they drive our work. So I'm not worried about it. It's just, as Rob mentioned, it's not something that we're going to be able to check off as done anytime soon.
So I have two questions, I think. I'll try to pare all my questions down to two. But Rob, you brought up a point, and that was the kindergarten and third grade and so on and so forth until we get into graduation. And then, that in itself, along with other things, will increase our black students coming back to be teachers, having more black teachers available to us. I'm not a teacher, but I think that teachers are inspired by, or students are inspired to be teachers by their teachers that taught them. So is that something that we're trying to also accomplish in having our students inspired by our teachers? Are black students inspired by teachers?
I hope so.
I think that's, I think that's one of those things that can easily be missed.
Yeah.
In that we're educating everybody, and it's real great. But if we're not getting a connection, if the teachers aren't getting a connection with the blacks population, and then we're missing, we're still at a gap.
Yeah.
So that was...
I'm looking at the compass there. I'm looking at the relational part of that compass. It's a, board members know it's a huge part of our ninth-grade program at the high school, for example, is the relationship between students and teacher.
So then, another question would be beyond diversity. So I did read your email. Thank you, Prachi. And it's offered in New Orleans. Is there a way to have the district go through, like, beyond diversity here? Bring them here so the board could go through it and many other people in the district?
Yes. So I'll clarify, and then we should let Prachi and maybe Frida answer this one. So there's a two-day training, which we call Beyond Diversity. I call it Beyond Diversity, that's local. And all of our teachers go through that training. They offer many other things as well. I'm saying they, it's WMAP, offers many other professional development opportunities as well. They offer a national conference, which the wonderful people behind me went to a couple of weeks ago in New Orleans. But for the vast majority of our staff, they're going to a two-day local training.
Thank you, Ken, for reading my email so carefully. So yes, the Beyond Diversity workshop is a two-day workshop that's offered several times during the year locally, and it's free to us because we're a WMAP district. But if I could just go back to this issue of hiring more teachers of color, thank you, Rob is a wonderful superintendent who gives me courage to speak my truth. I do not think that we have to wait for a one-on-one ratio of, you know, if you have 40% students of color, we need 40% students of, I mean, teachers of color. Because in the end, I think our challenge is, how do we ensure that every teacher considers every student in front of him or her as her student or his student? So it's not that just because I'm brown, I'm going to be racially conscious, or just because, you know. So the work is, that is what Rob was referring to, is this work of equity development. And how do we get each of our teachers, regardless of their color or race, to recognize that each of the students in front of him or her is their responsibility? And I think that's the challenge that is the task of our times.
And Ken, you're right. All board members should go through Beyond Diversity. There are quite a few opportunities Bruce and I have. I don't know if others have. Karen did, too. It's worth it.
And I'll find that information for you.
There's a mini-some.
Oh, Frida, help us.
I don't know if this happened.
Well, I just know that there will be another conference, even though there was a national conference through WMAP, I mean, through PEG, there's also one that they're going to have here in Minnesota. And I'm not sure about the dates, but it's kind of similar to the national conference in May. And one piece that I want to just kind of go back to the question about with the curriculum changes, and should we be worried about that? I think a lot of it goes back to what Rob was talking about. We're talking about systems. Once we put the systems in place, whatever changes that should occur should be an even flow. So regardless of the curriculum that changes, if we have the systems in place, such as the school improvement plan, the teachers are making sure that they're holding students and parents, everyone is being held accountable. I think once we put those systems in place, regardless of what changes occur, regardless of new teachers or administrators, the system itself should be able to run smoothly. So I think that's the piece that Rob was mentioning about through his various points.
So in the teacher evaluation, I assume that you'll be using the MMA scores to kind of measure where their students in their classroom are being at?
Well, we're using MCA. They're all, all the teacher evaluation system is tied to the MCA results. Yes. So in a way, we are, because that's the same test. And the way the goals are set for the district, there is a district goal, which is to close the gap between white students and black students, our two most far apart groups, while increasing the proficiency level of black students by at least 5%. So that's the district reading and math goal. Each school has a reading and math goal that's written exactly the same way. So it's to close the gap between white and black while increasing the black proficiency rate by at least 5%. And then each individual teacher sets a personal goal that's tied to those two goals. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all. I think it's exciting. I think there's a plan, and it's being implemented across the board with great leadership and, I think, great buy-in from the feedback that I'm hearing. So it's an opportunity, and we look forward to hearing the results. And it also fits within, you know, our mission, part of which says, we will ensure that all students attain the highest level of achievement. And that's what this work is about. Next up is an update on the elementary additions and district construction. I voted at Susan Lindgren. I walked into the office. I saw the carpet. It's in. It's okay. It looks like it'll wear well, I hope for that. There was an office off to the side in there, though, that wasn't finished. I didn't know what the plan was for that, though. Maybe you do, and maybe you don't know, Paul.
That's actually the new entry.
Oh, it's going to be the new entry once it gets finished? Okay.
And while you're getting going, I saw the Aquila bathroom. Looks very, very nice.
Good. That's good. That's the beginning of the update. It's progress is being made. So it sounds like...
Okay. And I'm going to go through a quick presentation. Like Paul said, we're going to go through a presentation showing what has been done so far and where we have to go from here. And Paul is with me to answer any questions after we're done with our presentation. And Aquila is the first one that we're going to go through. There's been a lot of work done at Aquila. There's above-ground masonry is nearly complete. The exterior brick is underway this week, and joist and deck is on-site with installation underway this week, as well as toilet room remodeling will be completed by this week. Peter Hobart, the two-story classroom, above-ground masonry and first-floor planking is complete. The joist and deck installation is going to be underway this week as well. Kindergarten, below-grade masonry is complete, and above-grade masonry is underway. Cafeteria, the excavation has finally come underway. Concrete footing is expected to be poured this week. Susan Lindgren, I think we just mentioned, the office has been completed. The entryway is underway. The new kindergarten room and the staff toilet rooms are complete. The two-story classroom addition, there's underground utility lines have been relocated at this point. The excavation is starting to begin. Structural modifications need to happen in order to start this process any further. And as we go into this discussion, we just want everybody to aware that, you know, there was some uncertainties that have happened during this construction process. There has been some hardships that have brought upon Rashawn, our contractor. They had some existing, I think we mentioned this at our last presentation, there was some soil conditions at Peter Hobart that were worse than expected, even beyond our soil borings. At Peter Hobart Cafeteria and at Susan Lindgren, we have been working these last two months, and I personally have been working on dealing with SentryLink and getting them to come in to do relocation of existing underground telephone lines. It has been a major process in getting them here to do the work. It's been kind of a two-month process, I think, is what we determined in finally getting them here to actually relocate those lines. And that was completed last week at Susan Lindgren, and I believe it was the prior week at Peter Hobart. So therefore, that's why it took so long for that excavation to occur. And last week, with discussion with WOLD Architects, with Paul and Mike Klass, we did find out that Rashawn has submitted a claim for additional time. And what this claim means is they just feel with all that has happened with the schedule, with SentryLink and with the soil corrections, there is a need for more time on their part. But at this point, WOLD and ourselves, meaning administration, meaning Rob and I, met last week with WOLD to discuss the claim, as well as where we want to go from here to negotiate that claim. So we're in the process of doing that and discussing what we need to do to bring to Rashawn our acceptance of that claim or our rejection of that claim at this point to hopefully negotiate some way of dealing with that and resolving it. it. So therefore, we're going to be having some additional meetings and confirm what schedule Roshan is going to bring to us to resolve this, this scheduling issue. So with that, we'll have some questions and answers.
So is that more time that they need? Is that for all of the buildings they're doing or any specific ones?
Well, I know there's been some questions about why, why didn't we tell the board all these things before and why don't we know these things are happening? The reality is that every day, something happens on the construction site, and a lot of times, they can accommodate it. And last week, for Roshan, it got sort of to the breaking point where they filed paperwork. Unfortunately, another thing that happens in that process is they don't necessarily start at some compromise in what they do. So they've asked for time on all the projects. We don't necessarily think that's necessarily due on all the projects, and we don't think that, that will affect the final completion beyond the end of January, or I'm sorry, the end of December for all the projects. But there is a risk that some of them won't be done, for sure. A, a pretty real risk, I would say. We do think that the classroom portions of all of them will be in, of Aquila and Peter Hobart will probably be done by the first of the year. That's, that's my guess right now.
So a risk could be the cafeteria, then?
That, and Susan Lindgren addition is horribly behind right now.
So is this a question of money or is this a question of, they're, they're still working on all of the buildings and going ahead at a reasonable pace? So it's not a question of give us more time or we won't come back. It's a question of how that affects their compensation for the work?
It's both time and money.
Is there a liquidated damages provision? Is that why?
We did not put liquidated damages on the project. So what you have at your disposal is actual damages. So if the district's been wronged, you are able to make a claim against them for something? Not holding school or other things that might have harmed the district in some way?
So, so your phrase for Susan Lindgren being horribly behind, what, what does that mean? That means in, well into January or still assessing that or?
Still assessing that. We don't, I don't know. I really don't know the answer. So we need to meet with them again. The last discussion we had with, so we met with Roshan last week to try to come to some agreement about when they were going to be done. They thought they were into January sometime with the completion, but then they did not confirm that on Friday like they were supposed to. So now we have to sort of meet again and figure out why that was and what problems they're now seeing.
So, so Rob, I guess from, maybe this is more of a question on our ends. What was our plan in terms of moving into those rooms? I'm assuming that we're using the rooms that we're using now and that the new rooms would just make it more comfortable. But I would imagine that we probably planned for a pre-break finish and then move stuff in there over break and then be ready by January. So now we have a, am I reading this right, that it's just a very compressed move-in time and transition time or?
Yes, I think you're exactly right. So each of the schools is operating with a Plan A and a Plan B. And Plan A is where they are now, where they're using spaces like stages for classrooms and doubling up on space because they're very crowded. The lunchroom at Peter Hobart, for example, some students are eating on the stage and some are eating in the class, in the lunchroom. So they're making it work. But as soon as the classroom space has become available, then there's going to be some shifting. And each of the schools has a plan for when that, you know, how that will happen as soon as they get the go-ahead. It would be ideal, as you said, if over the holidays, that shift, if that shifting could happen over the holidays, it would be ideal. And if it happens after the holidays, we'll just have to make it work. But there, there is a plan. They're ready to execute the plan as soon as these rooms are done.
It looks like winter has arrived. Is, is that going to delay any excavation that happens? Or do the construction folks know how to deal with the soils before they freeze? Because I would hate to be in a bind that way.
Yeah. Excavation's not going to be the problem. They'll, and it takes a while for frost to get in the ground and all that. It does, however, create complications for them. Once they need to do masonry, for instance, in cold weather, they have to protect things and put tents around things. It's called winter conditions. And so this delay in time is going to make them ask for money to deal with that problem that's created.
And, and the delay, was that because of Century Link, that two-month delay with Century Link? Or are there other things that have been the delay factors?
There's multiple-
And you don't have to answer it all here if you don't want to.
Sure.
Understand you're talking with them, so I don't want you to say something that's going to jeopardize your conversations. I just-
No, I think I can tell you what the issues are. We, what we don't have is a resolution to the issues. But it starts with the building permit, which took thirty days to get. So they're saying that delayed them. Century Link has been an issue. And what the problem is, it's, it's all of the phone lines into the building, and so they couldn't dig, basically, until that was moved. So that's pushed things back. The soil conditions at a couple of the different sites were worse than expected. So we had prepared to remove quite a bit of soil to correct things. And at Peter Hobart, I believe, they had to go actually down to eighteen feet deep and dig that out and replace all that soil. So, you know, those are real issues that they, as a contractor, couldn't have known about. We didn't know about them. It was not until you dig it up that you see that. And then the last one that I can think of right now, anyway, is at Susan Lindgren, there's an electrical, the main electrical line for the building runs through the area where the addition is, which we knew. It's on the drawings, shown as a line going in. What wasn't shown is that it's built into a big concrete vault. And so it's extraordinarily expensive to replace the line because we'd, we would have liked to have at that point, cut it and redo it. But it's going to cost less to shore up the concrete thing that's there and build around it than to cut the line and start over again. So, and again, that's something, it wasn't shown on existing drawings. There's really no way to, we don't even know when it was done. But it wasn't sort of uncovered until we got there. So all of those things together, as I explained to Sandy at the beginning or last week at some point, if you think of this like a budget, the, the contractor has contingency in the form of time in their, in their schedule. And all of these things together have really created a problem for them. It's sort of eaten up all the time contingency. And as I said last week, that kind of got to the breaking point with them, that they felt they needed to, to do, take action, to make a claim.
Thank you. I think we feel updated.
Thanks.
And thank you for all the work you're going to do to try to work through some resolution that works for our, our students in the district. Next up is the consent agenda. It's the shortest consent agenda I've, I've seen with simply minutes. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Ken. Is that right?
Jim.
It was Jim. It was Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carrie's seven oh. Up to our action agenda, it is recommended that the school board approve the 2014 audit as presented. Do we have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Bruce. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie's seven oh. Next is a request for approval of international travel 2015 French students. It is recommended that the school board approve the 2015 international travel request for the high school French students as presented. Do we have a motion?
So.
Moved by Karen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Julie. Any discussion beyond what we've had during the meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie's seven oh. Next, it is recommended that the school board approve the 2015 international travel request for the high school German students as presented. Do we have a motion?
So.
Moved by Ken. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Is there any discussion beyond what we had during the meeting itself? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie's seven oh. We are up to communications and transmittals. Karen's going first.
Xanadu starts on-
Hold it up, Karen. They didn't get it on camera. Wait till we see it. Maybe you can zero in. Thank you. Is that better?
Yep, that's good. So Xanadu starts here at the high school on November fourteenth and fifteenth at seven PM. It's seven dollars for seniors and students and ten dollars for adults. There's a matinee on November sixteenth at two PM. Then they do it all again on November twenty-first and twenty-second at seven PM and November twenty-third at two PM. They're also doing a couple of fundraisers. If you would like this sign for your yard, talk to me. Only fifteen bucks and you support the program. But they're also having a, a, a community skate at the Roller Garden on the seventeenth, seven bucks. It's from six to eight. And it's going to be a great production. The kids have been working really hard. And then one last thing to talk about, in terms of a children-first asset, number nineteen, the religious community. This is from October twenty-third. The Sun Sailor did a great story on a group of local religious organizations who have really worked together on the assets and supporting our students. So I really want to applaud the community building and partnership with Amy Orsted from Spirit of Christ, Rabbi Avi Alitsky from Bethel, Westwood Lutheran Church, Prince of Peace Lutheran Church, Aldersgate United Methodist. There's also a group called the Faith Community Table organized by Christina Fugé. And this group has worked very hard to be very intentional about supporting our kids through their various faith traditions. So thank you very much. We appreciate that.
I have to piggyback on that, Karen. My brother's partner is very excited about Xanadu. And he's going to drag my brother with him, I think, and we're all going to go. And it's going to be great.
I've been having fun looking at a Facebook page called, called Flashbacks of St. Louis Park. And although I didn't grow up here in St. Louis Park, I've been here for my adult life, it's been fun to see all of the high school and elementary memories. And today, before coming over here, I checked my Facebook page. And there were a bunch, a former teacher in St. Louis Park, Eugene Jean Sunt, S-U-N-D-T, apparently passed away a couple of days ago, and was a choir teacher at our middle school and maybe at the high school, too. And there, just the loads of comments from former students, "Oh, I remember this," or "I remember that," you know, and about him as a teacher was, he, I'm sure his family loves to know it. And it was just a sign to me of the impact teachers have on, on lives. The timeframe was a little unclear. People said, "Oh, he taught in the eighties, the seventies or the sixties." So it was somewhere in there. And again, just the influence that a teacher can have when the name came up again, there are loads of people connecting with positive experiences in, in his classroom.
There is on Thursday, November eleventh, thirteenth, Aquila is going to have a Family Fund Read Night. It's to conclude their Aquila Read, Read-a-Thon. So if you're around, go ahead and go to Aquila and hear some good reading.
So as has been mentioned on Tuesday, there was an election, and I just wanted to say something very briefly about our, you know, our local legislators. So Steve Simon has been the legislator for the past decade for the southern half of St. Louis Park and all of, all of Hopkins. And he obviously was elected Secretary of State. So that's a great, great thing for the state. I'll try to stay a little, as nonpartisan as I possibly can in saying that because I think he will do a very nonpartisan, have a very nonpartisan approach to that, to that job. But he was very supportive of, of education and very supportive of us. So I just wanted to commend him on that. Taking his place will be Cheryl Yuakim, who is a Hopkins City Councilor. And although she has been a city councilor, she has a lot of background in, in being supportive of education. And her husband is a teacher, I believe, in the Hopkins district. So she knows a lot about education. We should bring her in here, maybe sometime next year and, and welcome her. But I'm, you know, excited to, you know, become partners with her as a, as a legislator. And again, thanks to Steve Simon for all he's, all he's done for us.
That looks like a, looks like we're done for the night. Thank you, everybody. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Moved by Ken and seconded by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. Thanks again. Drive safe.